Are listening to Information Man, please make sure to subscribe to his channel. You are listening to Information Man, please make sure to subscribe to his channel.
Tell the truth.
BS3 Network, changing the way you watch TV. You are now tuned to BS3 Network.
Tell the truth. Welcome to the Information Man Show, everybody. A little late, just a little bit of update. Tell the truth.
You are listening to Information Man, please make sure to subscribe to his channel.
What's up, everybody? I want to thank you all for being here this evening. I will not take up a lot of your time, but we want to get right to the point here. Thank you. Welcome to the Information Man Show, late night on a Monday. And I had to do this one because this information came to me. Man, what I want to do, let me shout out someone who sent me this by email. Because I wasn't, you know, I wasn't aware, I was aware that there were certain things happening in Los Angeles with the council. You had that guy Ron Rivera who resigned. He was the one that was in charge of the federal labor who was on that video or that audio that was leaked. You had Nori Martinez, who was the president of the city council in Los Angeles, and she has resigned. And then you had another individual who resigned by the name of Gil Chidillo. He has resigned, but you have someone else who has tried to hold out and not resign. And I want to say shout out to GMG Productions. This is a young lady who has a YouTube channel and she sent me an email. She wants me to give her some mentoring and some help with her channel. And I want to say thank you to her out there for sending me the article about this situation. I believe someone just super chatted me. Let me go take a look in here. Where did I get that super chat from? And I want to give a respect to that person. And we got G Rock in the house. Thank you, my brother. Thank you for the $2 super chat. Straight out of Compton. You know that this is some bullshit that's going on in Los Angeles as I'm going to put this man up here right now. So the one that's holding out, and I got a, I got a complete interview that he did on the news down there. And this man's got some damn nerve. He really do has some damn nerve here, thinking that he gonna just stick it out. So he's saying that he's not going to resign, ladies and gentlemen, that he's, you're going to have to recall him. And just so you know, if you weren't aware of this, because he is a elected official, unfortunately, when you have an elected official who steps out of line, you have to recall them. You can't just fire them. The mayor, Garcetti, whatever the hell his name is in Los Angeles, he's a poor mayor as well. And this is a city that's run by Democrats, by the way. It's a damn shame that you have Democratic elected individuals. They probably got black votes from black people that did this bullshit. Now, he is saying he's not going to step down. You got to recall him, and that means they're going to have to spend taxpayers' dollars to put this fool on the ballot to see if everybody wants to get rid of him. He has a lot of confidence. And the reason why I believe, and let me know if you all can hear me in the chat room by putting a 1 in there to make sure that I know that you can hear me. The reason why, ladies and gentlemen, I believe that he feels very confident about sticking it out is because most of the people who voted for him largely in his district, his, you know, constituents are of Spanish speaking background. So he probably feels very comfortable that, yeah, I was on that audio talking shit about black folks. Or I co-signed what Nori did, what Martinez did, when she called the little, the black boy a monkey in Spanish. And then he sat up there and tried to justify it by saying, well, that's a word that we use in Spanish. My mother called me a little monkey. But everybody knows when you use that term, that it has a different meaning when it comes to black people. Okay? He was the one that used the Louis Vuitton that the kid, he's holding the kid like he's a Louis Vuitton bag. He lies and says, oh, I was thinking that she was talking about a bag that she has. So he's been bullshitting around. He's been lock, stock and barrel with this woman right here on that council. And they were behind closed doors, as I had talked about this before, talking about, we got your back. Don't worry, we're going to redistrict everything. You know, there's 25 blacks, there's 100 of us, and we can whoop some ass and all of that. And once again, there is no black and brown coalition. Now, if you're out there and you think that there's a black and brown coalition, I could sell you a bridge in Brooklyn. Alert to you black folks out there to think that there's a brown, that there's a brown and black coalition. That's a bell to alert you right now. No, did you get the memo? There is no black and brown coalition. Like any group, they're vying for power, as I said in the other video. We as black people need to go for power, not this friend, not this friendly, friendly stuff. Because these folks behind closed doors are cutting deals. They're worrying about their community, they're worrying about their economic survival. They're not worrying about black folks in Los Angeles. Black folks in Los Angeles are being impacted. How many of you know about the Baldwin Heights Project area where you had Latino gangs that were throwing multi cocktails into their apartments trying to burn them out of their project apartments in Los Angeles? See, nobody, many people didn't talk about that. I talked about that story many years ago when this happened. And a lot of these people got arrested that were involved in this situation. A lot of the gangs got arrested. So there's no love for black people in Los Angeles. We're being pushed further and further out in the margins, as I said before in the other video. So these individuals right here, again, Kevin D. DeLonge, he's the one on the far left that's holding out. The middle, that's Ron. That's, I believe that's Gil Chidillo who's out. Martinez, who was the president, she's completely out. He's wants, he wants to hole in there and say, hey, my people are going to have my back. I'm confident that my people are going to have my back. So just as a reminder before I go to the main, and thank you for that super chat as well, my brother. Thank you, Empress Goddess who's here. Thank you, CCNTV for being in the house tonight. Jill's Chocolate being here. Keeps is in the house. Jasmine Virgo, good to have you back on board over here. G Rock is in the house. He says he know blacks don't have the numbers out here. Right, they don't have, black people don't have the numbers in Los Angeles. And so that's why they're behind closed doors, trying to divvy up who's going to control this and control that. But what I'm, the point I'm trying to make tonight, and what's going on everyday people, is that he feels confident to defy that the people in Los Angeles want him out. And to be fair here, there are those in the, in the Spanish speaking community. I say Spanish speaking community because there's so many people who come from different parts of the world. Puerto Rico, Mexico, El Salvador, Central America. So I just use that term, Spanish speaking people in Los Angeles. They know, he knows that his people put him in office. He probably knows and saw that, he probably has already looked at the numbers and said, wait a minute, black people are not the ones that put me in this council seat. And this is the man who wants to be mayor of Los Angeles too. You can forget about that now, possibly, I don't know. I don't know. But this is the man who's probably looked at his numbers and said, I ain't stepping down for shit. Because the majority of the people who put me in office look just like me. They're of my heritage, of my lineage, of my background, of my language. And there weren't really many black people who voted for me anyway. So even if I insulted a little black baby that was adopted by Bonin, Bonin, one of the council members, who does not accept his apology, even if black people are not happy about this, I stand a chance of still being reelected because my people will probably not go against me, even though black people will go against me, but then they didn't vote for me in the first place. Now, maybe that's what he's thinking. Maybe, ladies and gentlemen, I don't know. But let me give you guys a reminder of where we got, how we got here with this right here, right now. Here we go, just a little bit of this.
So getting back to Marquise, I told Danny, if you want to cut a deal and if you want to, if you want to make like the boss moves, I would go after the airport. He goes, I know that idea. I said, tell Marquise, go take him from his friend.
Let me know if you can hear by putting a 7 in the chat room. Appreciate you all that are here. See how she's talking?
I go, I go, what is with the Bon, what is with Bonin? I said, Bonin?
Bonin, who has the kid?
I go, the same thing. He goes, why are they so cold?
I got some other goodies for you too. I just wanted to give us a reminder of how we got here.
Lo traes during Black History Month or give a council. You know, it's an accessory when we do the MLK parade.
That's Ron who there, Kevin DeLonge, he's all up in the conversation. He's all up in the conversation. He's not innocent.
You sit next to him, you don't have a sign. For MLK, for the parade that Herb used to organize and we need all the council who wanted to join Herb on the flow, because he used to do a whole flow to be nice. Bonin would be like, hey, Nori, are you going to the MLK? Well, Herb invited me out, I'll go. Okay, I'm bringing whatever the kid's name is. I'm like, it's like the oddest thing, it's like black and brown on this floor. And then there's this white guy with the little black kid who's misbehaved. Este niño has no, he's, they're not doing, yeah, no, they're not doing, the kid bouncing off the F and walls on the floor, practically tipping it over. There's nothing you can do to control him, but he's a changuito. And I'm just like, oh my God, I'm over here trying to parent this kid, and like, you can't do that. I said, no.
What's going on, Iverson? If you're new to the channel, welcome.
Is this your kid or anything? It's me and Karen Bass on the floor trying to check this little kid.
Karen Bass is running for mayor.
Karen Bass y la esposa de Marquise, Carrie. And we're all looking at each other because we're the three women on the floor, like, who's going to, this kid's going to tip us over? Because he's literally hanging on the rails.
Well, you can't let him, let him off because the spectators will beat his ass.
The spectators will beat his ass.
They're raising him like a little white kid, which I was like, this kid needs to be down. Like, let me, let me take him around the corner and then I'll bring him back.
It's crazy. Crazy, ladies and gentlemen. She laughing. So let me. All right, let me go to the next one. And here we go. Just a little reminder. They're going to talk about how this guy is with the black people.
Where's taking him from?
I have, I just said, hey, we need to talk.
Gil supported him from the.
All right, don't worry, I got you. So Gil's back seeing him line up.
Right there, you can see, she's saying, F that guy, he's with the blacks. So that tells you right there what's going on there on the council. Now, I talked about this in the show that I did before. Let me let you see one of the latest news reports in the Los Angeles area about this situation right now, folks.
The city council meets in just a few hours, and there's word that embalmed city council member Kevin DeLeona will not be at the meeting.
But he does want to stay on the council. He's refusing to step down after being caught on a secretly recorded racist conversation. NBC4's Annette Ariola is live in downtown LA where many people are still demanding his resignation. Annette.
Hey there, good morning, Lynette Adrian. Hello, everybody. Yes, council member Kevin DeLeona finally speaking out this week in separate interviews to address that leaked audio recording. He said he was ashamed that he was part of that conversation that included two other fellow council members. He expressed his remorse and he asked to be forgiven, but he also made it very clear that he would not be leaving office. Now, according to the LA Times, DeLeon asked in a letter to newly installed council president Paul Krikorian that he be excused from attending other meetings, future meetings in the coming weeks so he can focus on moving past.
Yeah, fair use, fair use. Thank you for reminding me.
Many still believe that he should be stepping down.
Fair use under 107. I'm ready to do the hard work to heal my community, but I want to say from the bottom of my heart that I really want to apologize because I failed. I failed to stop that meeting because I didn't raise my voice and stop the conversation.
No, you're just mad that you got caught.
I think that he's not going to get nowhere by saying those comments about African Americans because we do have a lot of African Americans living here, and I don't think that was right.
I belong here to the District 14 here, and I know him. He's been working a lot for the community. He is a real nice person.
Stop it right there. Now, when he says that he's been working really hard for the community, you got to keep it real. He's been working very hard for the Spanish speaking community. This man obviously is a part of that community, so he has a bias. This is what I'm saying. This is why I'm saying that Kevin D. Leon feels comfortable about saying, y'all got to recall me because I ain't stepping down for nothing. Because he knows that he has people just like this man right here who will see it as, oh, well, you know, he says he, he was involved in this conversation and he didn't stop it. And he's making little statements too in this meeting. But see, he's a nice man because he's been doing things for, he's been doing things for your community, which is why, in my opinion, ladies and gentlemen, why, part of the reason why he's not willing to step down because he knows that he's got a strong base of people who look just like him, who may come out and make sure he stays in office, which is why he's saying, y'all going to have to recall me, even though everybody on that council wants him off. Let's continue this.
I can tell you.
Council president Paul Krikorian has made it clear that he wants DeLeon's resignation. Now, right now, we are working on obtaining a copy of that letter that was sent to the LA Times. We're also reaching out to Krikorian for comment. Now, coming up in the next hour, we're going to be live outside DeLeon's home. We have been told that there is scheduled, a press conference scheduled for 7 o'clock this morning outside his home with several organizations and community groups spearheading that press conference. That is the very latest reporting.
Let me tell you guys something that these three are spicable. But let me let you know something that you may not know. So this situation is more dangerous than we really know because they've been on the council for many of years. And what people are not talking about is the long-term damage that they might have done to the black community in particular. Because right now, you're going to hear in the next thing I'm going to play for you, there is a black contractors company, a company that's owned by black people in Los Angeles. And a few years ago, this guy right here, Kevin D. Leon, did not approve a project for them that they had the money for, that they had the backing. And they feel to this day, they want him out of office because they believe that he purposely did not go with this very experienced black comp, own company that are contractors, that are developers. I think they're property, they're, they're land developers. And they feel that he's got to come off that, listen to me, folks. They feel that he's got to come off this council because they believe that he was biased in his review in the process when they were bidding on the project. And that they are a well-qualified organization. This was a, this is a black-owned contractors or land developers. And this is the thing that's sad about this. This isn't, this isn't, this did not come from the Republicans. This didn't come from the mega hats, the Donald Trump types, the, you know, let's make America great again types. This came from people who tell you, I'm a Democrat, we got your back, let's be about people of color. Let's be about working together, having a coalition across the board. This is the type of bullshit that they tell us when they walk into your television and they campaigning you, when they go into your schools or your churches, I mean, or your, your, your assembly halls, and they tell you about how you should vote. Right now, the Democrats want us all as black people to get out there and get out the vote for them and support them, but yet they got, we got Democrats like this who sound like they are members of the Donald Trump mega hat team. I'm talking about this type of stuff like this.
We will make America great again.
He might as well be wearing a mega hat. I'm telling y'all right now, these liberals, the white liberals in particular, but then we got people like this man, they don't give a damn about us, no more than the Republicans do. And this whole notion of people of color and what they do when you talk to Democrats and you say as a black person, what about reparations? What about bills specifically tailored to black people? They tell us, we need a damn study. We'll talk about that later. Right now, we need you to vote for us. But they got no problem saying, we need to deal with the immigration problem on the border in California or across the country to help Latino people or people from Central America that are Spanish speaking. They have no problem with coming out and saying, we want a, Asians come out and say, we want a crime bill tailored to what's happening to Asian people. And they'll come out and say, this is for Asian people. And then they'll lie to you. Don't, don't be fooled by black Democrats who lie to you and say, oh, that, that, that bill that the Chinese got also includes us. I want you all to go take a look at that bill. Every word in that bill is Chinese, Asian people, is Asian this and Asian that. Let me correct my language here, it's not, it's not Chinese, it's Asian people in our country. Everything in the language is Asian people this, Asian people that. The bill was tailored to them. And I'm not saying they didn't have a right to get a bill tailored to them. But when black people ask for something that we want, we get all this stuff about, well, what we going to do is trickle down, we going to do trickle down politics. See, if we help this group over here, it's going to trickle down to you, black folks. See, we're about marginalized people. We're about working with people of color, just like when you had that young man who asked Warnock, Raphael Warnock, what is your thoughts on reparation? And Warnock sat up there and ignored his question and said, I want equity. Never say anything about no, about reparations. And then he went into the spill about, well, you know, I want to focus on the marginalized people, which means that encompasses everybody in the bag with us, as if we're in some unity with other people. Here you have in Los Angeles, a place where black people are being pushed out of the margins. Black people are being gentrified out of our communities. Look at Inglewood right now, ever since they put the football stadium in there for the Rams. We're being gentrified out of the California in general. Other groups are planting their flags and they're sticking and staying. And then they're behind closed door, making sure that they maintain power. They're not trying to share power. They're not talking about black and brown. You didn't hear any black and brown on those audio tapes that were leaked. You're hearing all, you're hearing talk about what we going to do for the brown people. And I got to be honest with you, folks. I got to be honest, I really don't blame them because I don't really blame them for this reason. I blame them for the racism, but they should be doing what we should be. We should be doing the same thing that they're doing, instead of fighting each other in these damn social media spaces, arguing with each other. We should be bidding for power, and I said this in my other video. Los Angeles is a racial polarized town. Don't, don't get fooled by the Hollywood stuff. It is a racially polarizing town. And let me now let you see the next thing I want to present to you that you need to see right here, everybody. And thank you for being here in the chat room. Thank you. We got the real Aaron Collins in here. Empress Queen, DJ Chuck is in here saying, those politicians just want our hard-earned money and votes and doesn't, does nothing for our community, do nothing for our community, right? We got Natural out of Chicago in the house. We got This Beach Is Better, your cute self. All right. Empress Queen, we got the real Aaron Collins saying, this is us. No surprise to me considering that LA has never had a black and brown coalition. That's true. Now, let's go to the next video, which is very short, before we get to the real meat of this content tonight. Here we go, ladies and gentlemen.
Well, we have now heard from him. He has apologized, but he says he will not resign. He's been under pressure since the release of that secretly recorded and leaked racist conversation.
There's more fallout from this. The developers of a billion-dollar project in his district says they will not work with him. NBC4's.
Now, that billion-dollar project, ladies and gentlemen, it's a black-owned land developer company owned by black people. They don't want to work with this man who says he's not going to resign. You're going to just have to recall me. What's going on, Eddie? Thong, what's going on, Eddie? Thank you for being here. So they don't want to work with him. And the reason why I said what I said, why this is dangerous is because we don't know how much long-term damage that those three individual or those four individuals, and who knows who else is on that, on that damn council that's doing the same thing, but just didn't get caught on audio. We don't know how much more damage they did to keep the black community in terms of those in the black community who have the capital and the money to move things. We don't know how many more black business owners and how many black entrepreneurs have been squeezed out because of their tactics. Just keep that in mind. This is why this is important for me to do this tonight.
Paula Medina is live outside Kevin DeLeon's home where protesters have been camping out since the weekend. Mac.
Lynette Adrian, good morning. Those developers are black developers, and they also say they wonder whether or not they might have been potentially targeted by DeLeon. We'll talk about that in a short moment. But let me talk to you about the protesters out here this morning. They say DeLeon is holding the seat hostage, his city council seat. Take a look behind me, you can see they remain out here in front of his home, camped out for the better part of a week or so. They say they're not leaving until DeLeon actually resigns. But as you heard, the councilman remains defiant and vows he is not leaving.
I'm sorry to all of my colleagues. I'm sorry to my family, to my Bonin's family, to all the committees who have been hurt by that meeting. I failed. I failed in that moment in time to step up and shut that meeting down. I failed in that stepping up and stopping the incendiary words that were being expressed.
And DeLeon says he was wrong in participating in that racist, anti-indigenous and homophobic conversation with then-city council president Nori Martinez and council member Gil Sadio. He says he wants to work at regaining the trust of the community and his constituents, but council member Mike.
That's not going to happen.
Black son was the subject of the anti-black racism and who DeLeon compared to. to an accessory, says an apology is not enough.
There's no apology accepted yet, because for me, the first step to an apology has gotta be a resignation. This is a diverse city, and he insulted huge chunks of the city with divisive, harmful, hateful, racist comments.
I don't think he has a way to make excuses and apologies and get out of this.
That last person was council member Paul Corretts. All of the remaining council members, including Corretts, are still calling for DeLeon as well as Sadio to resign. As I mentioned this morning, we now are learning that a multi-billion-dollar project in DeLeon's district says they cannot and will not do business with DeLeon if he remains in office. The project is called Angel's Landing in downtown-
Now, ladies and gentlemen, he was gonna say, the project is Angel's Landing. I believe he's gonna say downtown LA. This is a black-owned developing company. They're the ones that will not do business with that man that you see on the screen right there. They're saying that he's got to go because they believe that he was involved in shutting down an opportunity that they were more, well-qualified for. This is what I mean. The, I think this situation is a lot deeper than just that audio. What's more deeper is the damage that they probably have been doing for a number of years since they've been on the council to marginalize black business owners and black people in that area. I believe this to be, I believe this to be true, that they've done damage, because you heard them behind closed doors talking about, we gonna split this up and cut that out. We got the numbers over to black people and F that guy, cuz he's for the black people.
... in LA. It's led by black developers who say they now fear DeLeon holds a racial bias against them and has been stalling city approvals, writing in part, we believe that the council member, due to our sponsorship, was unwilling to work with us to move forward with this project. So, the big question this morning remains, well, what happens next with the city councilman? He still has two years left on his term. If he's not resigning, residents and constituents in the area say they'll look toward a recall of the councilman, but they certainly hope he'll step up.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, so what you're hearing there, they're gonna recall him because he's saying you're gonna have to recall. Now, here's the meat of the program tonight, which will lead to us having a conclusion. I told you it was gonna be a short, uh, program tonight. Let's get to the interview. It was about eleven, twelve-minute interview where he came on a news program, and I gotta give it to the, uh, the interviewer at this particular, uh, news site. He actually grilled him. He actually asked him some hard questions that need to be answered, but he's bullshitting around still. And like I said again, just think about how much damage they might have been doing prior to being busted on that audio, because that audio is from a whole year ago in 2021. See, so they've been running their show on that council for some time before that even, that, that audio got leaked to everybody. So, I appreciate everybody in the chat room that's here, watching. Make sure you share this in your Twitter, your Facebook, all your social media, your con- your con-, your, uh, community tab, your content creator yourself. Welcome here. If you are new to the channel, subscribe, hit the bell notification. I definitely would appreciate that.
You are listening to Information Man. Please make sure to subscribe to his channel.
And with that said, let's get ready for the, for this report coming up right now.
Nothing anyone else in city government can do about it. We talked with Kevin DeLeon about the racist comments-
He's light. He's gonna sit down and talk. Y'all gonna hear his bullshit.
... President Martinez, Councilman Gil Sadio, and LA Labor Leader Ron Herrera.
Fair use, fair use, fair use.
Mayor Eric Garcetti.
Let me make sure I do this, because you know how the YouTube streets are, or how YouTube is. Let's do this right now. Let's get this right. Let's get this right. Let's get it right. All right, this is fair use, fair use, fair use. And, uh, hang on for a minute, why I put this up here. And I don't know what happened to this. There we go. There we go. All right, warning. Federal law allows citizens to reproduce, distribute, or exhibit portions of copyright motion picture, videos, tapes, or video discs under certain circumstances without the authorization of the copyright holder. This is called fair use, fair use, fair use. It allows for the purpose of criticism, news, reporting, teaching, and parody, which does not infringe of the copyright under seventeen USC 107. Fair use, fair use, fair use, fair use. All right. Let's get at it right now.
... and even President Joe Biden in refusing to step down. We get reaction from the new city-
So, he won't even listen to the president.
... Corian, who says the city cannot heal until DeLeon leaves. And among those who would be required to work with him, the next city attorney. We talked with the two candidates for the position, civil rights attorney Faisal Gill and financial litigator Heidi Felstein-Soto.
Good morning and welcome to the Tom Brokaw News Center here at Universal City.
I want y'all to listen to this very carefully.
Joining us is Councilman Kevin DeLeon of the Los Angeles City Council, represents the fourteenth district. That's Eagle Rock, Boyle Heights, Highland Park, and downtown Los Angeles. Thank you very much for joining us.
And thank you for the invitation.
So, um- All right, Borough Heights, if I'm not mistaken, that's where the Latin, the Mexican gangs were going up in there, bombing and harming black people in their, in their project homes. Hmm? Just want y'all to know that. And he supposed to be the representative in that. Now, he might have not been in his seat at the time that that happened some years ago. Let me just correct that, but that's an area where you have black people living, but the Mexican gangs are trying to take it over.
We have, we have heard what you have said in previous interviews. You are sorry that, um, you didn't stand up and stop that meeting when the racist comments were made, that you said, what was said in that recorded meeting was not a testament to your values, and that you will, in your words, do the hard work to rebuild connections and, and credibility with other members of the council, uh, and, and the city as a whole. You're also saying that you are not stepping down. Now, you will not be surprised that a lot of people don't believe any of that. What they believe is that Kevin DeLeon is a political figure who's always looking for the next job, ran for, uh, ran for mayor, ran for, uh, US Senate, and that this is all about you saving your political career. Dissuade us of that.
Let me say this. I know one thing that's certain, is if I do step down, then my constituents will have no voice in City Hall. Now, that's a fact. And also to-
He talking about his people.
In actuality, this is actually not about me, because it'd be a lot easier if I actually were to step down. I've dedicated my life, almost my entire adult life, even my teenage years, fighting for those and advocating for those in the trenches who have little or no voice, whether it be the janitors, whether it be the housekeepers, whether it be the cooks, the maids, the people who make this city, who make this state, who make this country go. It's always been about them. In fact, when I made California a sanctuary state, it wasn't about me. It was about the people who I represented all of my life. When I made California a one-hundred percent clean renewable energy state, it was never about me. It was about the people who-
Says something very important here. He said that he helped to make California a sanctuary city. Remember I talked yesterday on the show I did on Sunday about how many people have actually had the right to vote, whether they wanna be a sanctuary state? No, I, I live in California. That was never put on my ballot, just like in New York. Never put on their ballot. Nobody in California was allowed to vote on whether they wanted to be a sanctuary state, so that we can take in an influx of illegals and immigrants, people, I mean immigrants that have coming over, or let me correct that, illegals and migrants, people who are coming over here seeking asylum. They never took it to a vote to see if we wanted that in California, and I bet you a lot of Californians would have voted it down, knowing that it would be an influx of stress on our social systems, that we don't even do a damn good job of taking care of the people that are citizens here. But this guy was behind that, and I never got a ballot for that, because they're making decisions without taking it to the vote of the people. But you notice he said, well, my people won't have any representation. You know who he's talking about. He damn sure ain't talking about black folks. The same black folks that he was behind those curtains, talking all that bullshit about.
... who I represent. So, I can tell you this, Conan, it's been a very difficult, very painful-
I told y'all.
... past two weeks. But it'd be a lot easier, actually, if I were to step down. But if I were to do so, one thing is absolutely certain, is my constituents would have no voice in City Hall.
Uh, Paul Corian, the president of the city council, who we will be talking to in a moment, he has said it is the height of arrogance for you to say that of the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people in your district, you are the only one who can ably represent them.
You hear that?
Well, I never said I was the only one who could-
You just said it!
But I did say-
Ladies and gentlemen, wait a minute, wait a minute. Ladies and gentlemen, for the purpose of this, you all heard it yourself. Didn't this man just say he ain't stepping down, because he's, there'd be no one to represent his people. He's the one, he's the, he is their Moses. And he feel, and for him to have the confidence not to step down, this man may know something that we don't know, and that is the people that put him in office, they gonna keep him in office, even though he was caught on that audio talking cheesy about black people, the same black people that's in this chat room tonight. Let's hear more. For the seven, if y'all heard that bullshit, let's go back at, let me even move it back a little bit, just a little bit, not too much. I don't wanna hold y'all too late tonight.
... thousand people in your district, you are the only one who can ably represent them.
Well, I never said I was the only one who could ably represent them. But I did-
Well, then step down then.
... clearly, if I were to step down, they would have no voice in City Hall.
Right, but it, it's certainly implied. Now, you, you've been taken off committees. Uh, LA Times reports that there are two prominent black-
Listen to how he kind of redicted himself. He says, no, I didn't say I'm the only one that can represent them. But then you said, if you step down, they won't have a voice. So, if they won't, so if you're, if you're not the only one that rep, that can represent them, then, then they would have a voice, because you said I'm not the only one that could represent them. Or is he really saying that he ain't stepping down because he knows that he's the only one that looks like his people? See, what you're seeing here is an example of the power play, the power dynamic. He ain't stepping down because he knows that if he steps down, somebody who doesn't look like him could possibly get that seat like a black person. And his, his antics is that I'm the only one that can represent them, because he's of the people that put him in office, that look like him, who are Spanish-speaking, who are of his culture and heritage. So, I think that's what he means. He's, he's saying, okay, yeah, some other, somebody could represent them, but they ain't me. They ain't of the culture, see? This ain't about, see, this whole thing about, it's about black and brown is BS. He's holding, he's holding his toes ten foot down and saying, hell no, I'm not stepping down, so that somebody who is not of the culture of the people that I represent get the seat, because I can talk to my people. And you know what, folks? It makes perfect sense, because we should have black people who represent us, who can speak our language and know our way that we operate. I totally get why he's doing this. But he's sitting up here being not, he's not being honest on this, on this interview. Let's get at it.
Developers on the Angel's Landing development, high-rise, lots of jobs, who say they, they don't wanna talk to you, uh, that, they, they tried to talk to you before this, uh, this tape was made public, and that you stonewalled them. And so, uh, how can your district have a voice when there are members of the city council who don't wanna even be in the same room with you right now?
Well, I can say this. With regards to developers, I have a policy that I don't engage with a lot of developers until the deal is almost settled, and that's when I'll engage. I have a set criteria for housing inclusion and affordability. But I know I have to do the hard work, Conan. I know I have to make-
What does that mean?
The hard work, it's a, it's a part from being profusely apologetic and sorry for not stepping in and stopping that meeting, but it also means atoning and making amends, regaining the trust of my colleagues on the city council, regaining the trust for those who are disappointed in me and my lack of actions during that course of that moment of the meeting of last year.
In, in one of the interviews you gave, you said that after the meeting, you claimed that you went walking outside, uh, you talked to Gil Sadio, uh, the other councilman that was there, and you made reference to, uh, those were racist comments by Nury Martinez. You know, that was just really inappropriate. Is that true?
It's accurate. You can ask him if you like.
What, what did you say?
I just shook my head as we're walking down the hallway, uh, at the LA County Federation of Labor, and I just spoke with him, and I said I was just stunned by the comments that are made. Unfortunately, uh, for me, they're not captured in either video or audio.
Right. Well, here's why a lot of people-
So, now you see what he's doing. He's trying to, he's trying to bullshit, explain his way out of, he's trying to say that, well, later on, I said something, but unfortunately, that didn't get caught on. So, he's basically trying to say that after they had that conversation, he didn't like it, so he said some things to them, but unfortunately, that didn't get caught on audio. This is bullshit. He's just saying whatever he's gotta say. See, politicians are snakes to the ground. They'll do whatever they gotta do, lie, cheat, and steal. He's just saying whatever he's gotta say, because he's enjoying being in that cushy seat, getting that cushy salary, getting that good money off the taxpayers' dime. And like this, like the, the interviewer said, hey, since you've been in office, you've been trying to remove up the food chain. First, you were trying to run for mayor, then you were trying to run for state senate. You, you, this guy has political aspirations that go beyond just Los Angeles, but it hasn't been working out for him, especially with this situation coming down on him.
Would not believe that. And that is, if you listen to the audio, uh, it's, it seemed normal. There was a, uh, uh, there's a jocularity to it, that when she made-
Right. Normal conversation.
... Mike Bonnens African-American child as a, as a prop. Uh, you chimed in immediately, uh, when Nury brings her little yard bag, or the Louis Vuitton bag. It just seemed like you guys were a team, and this is what you normally, normally talk to them.
No, actually, I've had very few meetings, personal meetings with her, and you can look at my calendar. I made a flippant remark, which I am profoundly sorry for. The joke that I made, which was a bad joke, was actually directed towards Nury Martinez for her pension for high-priced luxury bags. It was a bad joke, and I shouldn't have made that flippant remark.
That's a lie. He made the reference towards, uh, the, the little black, the boy, the little black baby, and how, I guess, the stepfather, the adopted father Bonnens was holding him, saying that he's holding him like a Louis Vuitton bag. He just lied. He just lied on this interview, because I, we played the audio, and I heard that audio a bunch of times, and that's what he was saying. And they were laughing about it. And then remember, there was a point where Ron Rivera had said, if we kick that baby off, that, that, that child off the, uh, float, the people that is watching her whoop his you-know-what. And remember, she says she wanted to take the kid behind the, behind the back walls or the back streets and do harm. Come on, and this man was, he was, what do you call that? He was, um, co-signing all the BS that was happening, all the BS.
Tell the truth.
Something. Rick Sanchez is a former reporter at MSNBC and CNN. Um, he, uh, has a Latino podcast, and he was quoted in the Los Angeles Times as saying the, the term that was used by Nury Martinez, uh, changuito, that is, uh, little monkey, was not about the child's grace, but that, uh, he was, uh, hyperactive, and that, that, that phrase is used routinely in Latino homes, and it's, it wasn't necessarily a, uh, pejorative, uh, racial pejorative. Do you believe that?
Listen, I'm not in the heart and soul and mind of Nury Martinez.
He's asking you a question.
I've been called that many times, you know? My mother used to say when I used to bounce off the walls, but that was my mother. That's me. You know, that's other family members here. I can't speak for Nury Martinez. It was inappropriate. She shouldn't have ever have said it, period.
Let, let's talk a little bit about what you had to say. Um, the biggest threat to Latinos were not those crazies in Orange County who were pro-Trump. It's the white liberals. It's the LA Times. When you talked about Mike Bonnens, he says, Mike Bonnens won't effing ever say peep about Latinos.
Uh-oh.
He never say any effing word about us. You called him the fourth black member.
Oh, see that?
Is that how you look at the city?
It was a sense of frustration.
It's Latino, black versus white?
No.
That's how Kevin DeLeon sees Los Angeles.
No. It was a sense of frustration and-
No, fool. That's how you see Los Angeles. The interviewer is excellent, in my opinion. He's got your ass. He got you in the crossfires with your BS. Let me move that back just a little bit. Gotta hear that again.
When you talked about Mike Bonnens, he says, Mike Bonnens won't effing ever say peep about Latinos.
He's the one that has the black, the black, uh, baby.
He never say any effing word about us. You called him the fourth black member. Is that how you look at the city?
It was a sense of frustration.
It's Latino, black versus white?
No.
That's how Kevin DeLeon sees Los Angeles.
No. It was a sense of frustration on my part about political representation. I should have said it, and I should express it a much different way.
They just sorry that they got caught on audio.
It, it was all about race.
Yeah, it was all about- Yeah, it was all about race.
Latino versus black, a white man who's a councilman who thinks he's black because he's a black child.
No, it had nothing to do with it right there.
Yes, it did.
Reprehensible.
I should have chose.
I gotta give his, I gotta give, I mean, if it was me interviewing him, I'd be a little bit more, you know, more hardcore, but I gotta give it to the, to the news anchor. He, he's actually making some great points here. I gotta give him a clap, y'all. I gotta give him a clap. I mean, you know, if it was me and you and all y'all in the chat room and everybody listening, we'd be all on this guy, but I gotta be, he, he got him, he caught him in a corner. He said, well, man, wait a minute now, it was kind of racial what you were saying, and this, this Kevin D. Leon is saying, well, you know, I was in a moment, you know, isn't it interesting, folks? When people talk about black folks like a dog of other races that they claim we supposed to have a coalition with, when they get caught, they say, oh, I didn't mean to say this, I didn't mean to say that. Everybody has an excuse for why they say what they say about us. But the minute you talk about them, what happens? Look at Kanye West and his goofy little self. Look at how he can talk about rappers, and I've been hearing about this lately, folks, rappers have been told to take certain words out of their songs when they're talking about people of the Jewish community, but it's okay for you to say derogatory terms about black people, whether you're black, white, or whatever, and it's okay. Let's sell that music that way, let's package it that way. And look what's happened to Kanye West. Soon as he went on, on the Jewish community, they're holding him accountable, but nobody says anything about when you talk about black folks. Isn't that the point that Dave Chappelle was trying to make when everybody jumped on Dave Chappelle? He said, isn't it interesting how you can say the word in, in, in all day on stage as a comedian, nobody has a problem with that, but if I talk about any other groups, they're gonna hold me accountable, even when I'm joking? Same thing here with these politicians like this guy. Oh, I didn't mean this, I didn't mean, no, that's not what we were really trying to say. No, 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 no. Bullshit. And this is why I'm glad that the, the guy interviewing him here is getting, is, is, he's not getting on him like a junkyard dog like I would, but I think he's backing him in a corner that he really can't crawl out of.
On my part about political representation. I should have said it, I should express it a much different way, Conan, you know, I am.
It, it was all about race. Latino versus black, a white man who's a councilman who thinks he's black because he's a black child.
No, it had nothing to do with it right there.
That was reprehensible.
I should have chose better words.
You tell him, you tell him, sir. He said, ladies and gentlemen, it's funny how, you know, it's funny how the man, he said, that was, you know, let me, you know, black people, we just talk different from white people. We be on your ass, we be like, you motherfucker, you, you giant turkey motherfucker, we be all on your ass. You sucker, you, you, you idiot, you, well, white folks, they be like, that was reprehensible. You know? They use them, they use them polite words when they get, you know, they use polite words when they get on, when they start getting on you, they be using these polite words like, that was reprehensible, that was not understandable, sir. Black folks, we be like, you motherfucker, you, we get all, we get all on your ass, we'll call you a, boy, 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 isn't it different how different people, you know, come at people? But here, let's get back to it. He said reprehensible, I gotta hear it one more time, that was reprehensible, but it was, it was.
It was a sense of frustration.
It's Latino, black versus white?
No.
That's how Kevin DeLeon sees Los Angeles.
No, it was a sense of frustration on my part about political representation. I should have said it, I should express it a much different way, Conan, you know, I am.
It, it was all about race.
Mm-hmm, it was.
Latino versus black, a white man who's a councilman who thinks he's black because he's a black child.
No, it had nothing to do with it right there.
That was reprehensible.
I should have chose better words.
Reprehensible, black folks, we don't use words like that, we just be like, you motherfucker.
It was my frustration and the voices that I believe have not been practiced in, and the decisions that are critical for the government.
I'm not saying we can't use those words, we just use different words when we, when we get in your ass.
You always talk about inclusion, that didn't sound like inclusion, that sounded like exclusion.
Here we go with that inclusion stuff.
You're not part of our clique. Our clique is the Latino clique. The labor leader there, Ron Herrera, says, my goal is to get you guys elected, and the pejorative.
I gotta give it to him again, there it is. Once again, there is no black and brown coalition, ladies and gentlemen, especially in, in, in LA. He broke it down, he said, it looks like you guys have a clique, I don't see a coalition, even the, even the white guy could see it. I don't see a coalition, I just see you and Ron Rivera and Nuri Martinez talking about, we gotta worry about the Latinos. Which, by the way, ladies and gentlemen, that's what they should do, which is what we should be doing too, you see? But they were engaging in racism all the way back. That's why that, the angel, the developing company out there in Los, a black-owned developing company is saying he's got to step down because they believe that he was racially biased when it came to a contract that they bid it on, that they were very qualified to get. But I just, I mean, he breaks it down right, he says, wait a minute, you guys are in your little cliques here. I mean, it's, it's funny how the white guys, you know, talk about these things. You know, black people, we just be like, you motherfucker, y'all ain't no damn good, and F you, and we, we would go in on these people.
Latino versus black, a white man who's a councilman who thinks he's black because he's a black child.
No, it had nothing to do with it right there.
That was reprehensible.
I should have chose better words and better way to phrase it. It was my frustration of the voices who I believe have not been practiced in.
So let me stop something here.
That are critical.
This is very important. Carolina Harvey says, no information, man, he would not even let black person, black people interview. And earlier, when you came on, my sister, I played a video, there's a, you may, maybe you're from the Southern California area, there was a company owned by black people, a developing company called Angel, something Angel, and they want him off the council because they believe that a few years back, that him, Kevin D. Long and his ilk were involved in pushing them out of an opportunity. And you're saying to me tonight that they not even letting black people even get a sniff at the opportunity. It does not surprise me. Let me also read something to you off, out there, if you're from Chicago, well, you got problems in Chicago. If you're from Chicago, there was an article that came out that said, Chicago black contractors' number still too low. The city council black caucus says, and they gotta do something about this, in Mayor Lightfoot, administration paid 763 million to prime contractors in Chicago through July 31st of the, of this year, 2022, but only 11% of the total $82 million went to companies owned by black Americans. This is in Chicago. So this problem is not just in Los Angeles, folks, this is all across the country. Check this out. The Hispanic or the Spanish-speaking population fared a lot better in Chicago. Their share was 109 million or 14% of the citywide total. Asian-Americans in Chicago, fastest, fastest-growing ethnic group in Chicago, got about 7%, 7% pieces of the contract pie, or 51 million non-minority firms controlled by women got 4% or 34% of the pie. So Latinos are faring very well in Chicago, which used to be a black city. I hope it's still, I mean, what does it tell you? What does it tell you? Lori Lightfoot, or as I've called her, Beetlejuice in the past, she's the mayor and black people are not even getting the contracts at a high percentage, and, and, and you got a lot of, you got, and that's, that's a black, a high black population in Chicago, or maybe not because I've looked at other data that says that Chicago is starting to lose its black population because they're leaving Chicago. Neighborhoods like Inglewood are starting to shrink in their numbers based on past years. I'll be doing a show about that. Let's can hear, so I'm telling you, this is not just, if you think this is isolated to Los Angeles, you got another thing, you got another thing coming.
Tell the truth.
...of all of our communities together. You keep, you're a proud Democrat, progressive Democrat, you always talk about inclusion.
See, Democrat.
That didn't sound like inclusion, that sounded like exclusion. You're not part of our clique. Our clique is the Latino clique.
Right.
The labor leader there, Ron Herrera, says, my goal is to get you guys elected, and the pejorative is used for, I mean, you could only read into that, that if you are African-American and a member of the city council, you can't represent Latinos because you're black.
Yeah, that's, actually, I think that's inaccurate because I have a long history, I have a record of supporting strongly.
Okay, he says that it's inaccurate, but that's what they were talking about on the audio that was leaked. So how he's gonna make his comeback? Is he gonna tell you, well, this is what I did for black people, and I got a long history of working? Dude, you could, those, those can all be facades. Let's go back at it.
Because you're black.
Yeah, that's, actually, I think that's inaccurate because I have a long history. I have a record of supporting strongly African-American candidates and other elected officials in high-majority Latino districts.
I wonder what he got from them? Because you know, politics is one hand washes the other.
Many political offices, I represented Kamala Harris over Laura DeSantis.
Kamala Ha-
I represented Coram Price.
Wait a minute.
That's 70.
Stop the damn presses right now. He's pulling Kamala Harris out of his hat, and Kamala Harris is the same Kamala Harris who got on the griot when they interviewed her and said, nah, I'm not gonna do something just for black people. And this, that's the same Kamala Harris, when she got into office, the first thing she said she was gonna do is work on the immigration situation across the border, talking about how, what they gonna do for the immigrants, the illegals that she's sneaking, sneaking over here every damn day in California, right? But nothing for black people, nothing specifically for us. And then you sisters out there that voted for Biden at 93%, black men voted at 83% for the Democrats, for you sisters out there that was saying, Biden, Joe Biden, vote Joe Biden, we need a black woman as vice president. Ask yourself, since she been in office, what has Kamala Harris done tangibly for black women who are the main people who pushed Joe Biden to put her on the ticket in the first place? The same Kamala Harris that one day she wants to act like she black by wearing Converse and dancing around and lying about the fact that she was listening to Tupac when Tupac didn't even have a damn album, lying and talking about that she was bused to a school in Berkeley, California, where I worked before, when Berkeley was already a immigrated city already, that already had different people of color. Hell, Berkeley's got a, got a damn elementary school or junior high school named after Malcolm X. So Berkeley's already been on that, 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 that type of high liberalism. So she lied and said that she got bused to a place that was already integrated. That's Berkeley, go do your history about Berkeley. Berkeley's the only major city in this country that's got schools and, and has a holiday, they have a holiday after Malcolm X. Do you, do you, do you understand what I'm saying? In Berkeley, California, they celebrate Malcolm X's birthday. I think the kids get the day off, and they got schools named after him. And Berkeley, we call it out here in the Bay Area, Zerkly. So one day Kamala wants to be Indian, one day she wanna be black, can't make up her mind. Her father is from Jamaica, you never hear anything about him. So he's pulling her out of the rabbit hat as if that's gonna impress black people. Give me a break, man. You get, you get a, you get a, you get a F and a D with that. All right, let's hear the rest of the nonsense.
Percent Latino over a Latino woman. So I have a long history.
So he voted for a woman over a Latino woman?
With my African-American brothers and sisters.
I wonder how much money was exchanged between them.
Injustice for all.
So this meeting was about reapportionment or redistricting, which is where the politicians pick the voters, and it's fundamental to who.
I tell y'all, man.
Anybody gets elected, your reelection chances are based on.
Happens every 10 years.
Happens every 10 years. Nithya Raman is a progressive member of the city council, and you guys, you know, threw her under the bus. You said, she, her district is the one to put in the blender and chop up left and right. That is naked politics. That is, that, I, I got, it's hardball. Certainly, that job shouldn't be in the hands of the city council.
Man, this, this, this guy is really, really doing him in. He's exposing him.
Process, I'd be supportive of that. I know we have that for the state of California, we don't have that for the city of Los Angeles.
Was it a violation of the Civil Rights Act? Because the attorney general's looking into that.
Oh, man, this man did his homework.
Uh, districts were protected, as well as Latino districts were protected.
So.
You gotta admit, this man has done his homework on this guy. I gotta give him a clap. This is a trip how white people, they'll politely try to, they'll politely try to get at you, right? Black folks, we gonna jump all over your butt. Thank you for the super sticker, Empress Goddess, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you for the super sticker.
Very nice of you, and you also gave me another, you gave me a super sticker, really appreciate that again. We got Harper, we got Harper, Harp in the house, Last Call, Alan Christian in the house, Alonzo Hall, the All-Star advisor, thank you for being here. If you're new to the channel, definitely subscribe to the channel, hit the bell notification. We, I usually go live on Sundays, and we get a bigger crowd over here. This is just a prompt to stream tonight because I got this information by GMG Production, a young lady who emailed me, and I just had to go with it, it'll give you guys an update. We got Love to Travel with Wave, check her channel out, we got Peggy Roster in the house, Earl Owens, everybody in the house. Caroline, let me read what you wrote right here, my sister. You said, it definitely didn't, did not vote for Biden, Kamala, and was so disappointing, certain social media telling folks not to vote, all of one, all of one of them was going to win. I prefer Trump. Okay, I don't prefer Trump. I just think that the Democrats and the Republicans are the same birds of the same wing. One screws you with Vaseline, that'd be the Democrats, the other screws you without Vaseline, that'd be the Republicans.
Tell the truth.
Either way, black folks, we end up like Charlie Brown on Halloween with rocks in our bag.
Tell the truth.
When we deal with these parties. And part of our problem is that we don't have the right politicians representing us in either party. Most of the Democratic black candidates, they are too busy raccooning it up and not doing what they're supposed to do for us. Let's go back and listen to this, and we're getting ready to close out tonight, folks.
Uh, districts were protected, as well as Latino districts were protected.
So could there possibly come a point, other than a recall from the constituents in your district, that you say, you know what, this is tearing the city apart, it is not good for the rest of Los Angeles, and, and what needs to, what needs to happen is I need to leave? Is there, is there at all, what would have to happen for you to reach that?
He needs to leave.
There's always a moment for something, you know, but what I'm trying to do right now, aside from being profoundly sorry for my actions and lack thereof, of stepping in and stopping the words, the ugly words that were shared in that meeting, I'm trying to atone, I'm trying to make amends.
And you want to engage with the, your colleagues on the council?
You know what's funny about this, this guy interviewing him? Look at his face, he got that look on his face like, you full of shit. He got a look like he wanna say, you full of shit. Look right here, look right here. Right there. He got that look like.
You know what? This is tearing the city apart. It is not good for the rest of Los Angeles.
It's not, he's right.
And what needs to, what needs to happen is I need to leave. Is there, is there at all, what would have to happen for you to reach that?
Conan, there's always a moment for something, you know, but what I'm trying to do right now, aside from being profoundly sorry for my actions and lack thereof, of stepping in and stopping the words, the ugly words that were shared in that meeting, I'm trying to atone.
Look at him, right there. Look, that's what, he got a look, 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 that white man got a look on his face like, you a goddamn liar. He got that, he got, he got that, it's reprehensible look. Aw, man, we about to close it out soon, hang on, let's play this out. I just had to stop it and freeze it because he got that look like, you a lie and the truth ain't in you. Aw, man, I tell you, man, it's a crazy world we living in today.
Trying to make amends.
And you want to engage with the, your colleagues on the council. What if they say, we don't want to engage with you? We, we don't want to be in the same ring. We don't want to talk to you. We will if you leave. That's it. What happens then?
No, right now I have to regain their trust. I have to regain their trust. I can't predict what the future will be like right now. I have to do the hard work.
The future is for you to get out.
Kevin DeLeon is the Los Angeles City Councilman from the 14th Council District.
Information is power. You are listening to Information Man. Please make sure to subscribe to this channel.
It's crazy. All right, ladies and gentlemen. This is what I'm gonna do, 'cause I know uh, real Aaron Collins wants to come up and talk. I cannot talk very long tonight. I didn't want to make this a long show tonight, so out of respect for you, Aaron, I will drop a link in the chat room. Um, 'cause I know you're in Los Angeles. And uh, anybody that wants to say a few words, but it's gotta be short, 'cause I, I just, I can't um, I can't make this a late one. I wasn't even, I don't normally even go live during the week on this channel. I usually do my other channel, which is the Information Man Speaks Podcast where I'll go live. But I'm a little tired tonight. I need to get some rest. So Aaron, I'm gonna drop a link. If there's anybody else that wanna come up and say anything, it's gotta be short. It can't be, and I, and I, and I do mean it this time around. I um, it has to be short. Uh, because I, I can't do another hour or even another 30 minutes. It's gotta be short, a point, points. You gotta make your points concise and I appreciate that. Just, it's just that I'm tired tonight. And I just can't, I can't afford to be up anymore, uh, longer. It's, it's been a long day for me. And I know it's been a long day for all of you around the country. But I just dropped that in there. If you wanna come up, Aaron, and anybody else, and make your points about what you wanna say about this particular issue. I just wanted to give you an update on what's going on. And I thought it was very profound that he, he was even uh, he has to be crazy to go in there and do an interview, but I know why he's doing interviews. It's not the only interview he's done. He's making his rounds around the media. He's trying to do damage control. They call it damage control. He's trying to flip the narrative around to make it seem like he's so, so sorry so that he can win the hearts and minds of, especially the people that already support him and maybe a people, a few people that are straggling along. All right, Aaron, I'll see you in there. Let's see what we can talk about here. And uh, come on in, brother, and um, um, let me hear what you got to say about this, brother. Go right ahead.
Slip your information, man. I won't be wrong, brother. I gotta be strong though. So yeah, one of the neighborhoods that DeLeon represented that you mentioned, um, Highland Park and Eagle Rock. These are actually historically Latin neighborhoods. Um, that's, that's like northeast LA. And I've, I've lived in Highland Park before. Um, Highland Park was actually the site of three major high-profile hate crimes, um, I believe in the 90s involving Mexican gang members.
Yes, I, I talked about that earlier. Remember I did that show some years ago? They were like bombing them out. They were trying to get black people out of there and they ended up arresting, I think 18 or 20 or of, of those individuals that was involved. Um, but this the thing though, was Kevin DeLonge, was this man in the council at that time when it happened? Or maybe he wasn't in the council at that time? Cause he's been around politics for a little bit.
Not that I know of.
Yeah, I don't think he was uh, in, yeah, go ahead.
With, with the fire bombings? Now that was Boyle Heights. That's another neighborhood.
Boyle Heights.
Yeah, and Boyle Heights, that's over there close to East LA, which already doesn't have a, a really big black population to begin with.
Okay.
But um, but a lot of these gangs are connected with, with the Mexican mafia. Um, you know, that, the, the Mexican mafia has a, a, a strong toehold on many of the Latino gangs here, which are known as Serenios. And even, even though they don't, they go to war with each other, they've been actually giving directives from the Mexican mafia to the green light black people. So.
Yeah, I know that. I know that from where I work at. I was told in, from the inside that they've got a green light because they believe that California belongs to them. And the goal is to drive black people out of neighborhoods that they wanna control. And they send the gangs out there who are selling the drugs to control territory. And that's why every now and then you will hear of a young black male who's been harmed, right? And people will think that it's just a gang-related situation when that young man wasn't even in a gang. And then sometimes when you have gang initiations to be a member of the gang, they have you go out there and do some harm. And that harm is, is coming at black people. And see, nobody is talking about that too. But um, but I wanna, Aaron, with the time that we have, uh, what are your thoughts about this guy? Uh, everyone else has resigned. Uh, this, this individual, Kevin DeLonge, he doesn't wanna step down. He feels confident that uh, he wants his people to make that decision. He must really feel, I think he feels confident because he probably has a lot of people who look like him, who he probably already knows are gonna keep him in office if it comes up for a recall. What do you think?
I'm not surprised because he's got strong cultural ties in this city. And I personally, I think he was probably, I, I don't have proof of this, but I think he might have been on the council with Antonio Virgosa, who was the former mayor of LA. And, and he made actually LA a sanctuary city, which was basically open for immigrants. So.
And you know why they did that? They did that for their people. That's a move that they made. But I don't understand how these uh, mayors and these politicians can just make a law, just make a rule like that without taking it to a vote to let people vote on it. Because I bet you, if they would have put that on the ballot, you would have had a lot of Californians behind those closed doors of voting that would have probably voted against that, knowing that it would be a drain economically on our medical systems, our school systems, having an influx of all these people coming in here. And we not even doing right by, by the people that's already citizens here. I, I bet you California would have voted against it. And I don't know how they can get away with something like that. But anyway, go, go, go on, Aaron.
Yeah, right, right though saying that, I don't have proof of it, but I wouldn't be surprised because when um, you did a story on this too, Infomant, but when Pedro Espinoza, who was a member of the 18th Street Gang murdered that, that black kid who was the son of a, a, a Gulf War veteran, he had made um, the reason why Espinoza was able to escape is because, I mean, Virgosa made LA a sanctuary city even back then. So, so this is basically, it, it's no surprise because, because of the cultural history of racism between black and brown people here. And, and it's not necessarily the, the regular citizenship. It is really, it starts from the gangs, but it's tripped and trickled down to the regular citizens also.
Now, Aaron, we got a G, G Rock here. I think he might be out there in Los Angeles too. He says they were firebombing blacks also in uh, what's it, uh, Hawaii Gardens projects? Is that out there in Los Angeles?
Yeah, Hawaiian Gardens. Yeah, that's over there, um, somewhere, it's, it's, it's near, it's near South Central. I, I know where Hawaiian Gardens is, yeah.
Right, and of course, uh, Last Call says something about cops being in gangs. We know that the, the Sheriff's Department in Los Angeles is riddled with a gang, um, with cops that have ties to some of these gangs. Nobody wants to deal with that issue too. And I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say allegedly, because we're on YouTube and you know how they do, so I'll say it's been alleged. Even though we know what the truth is, it's been alleged that they got a gang element in the LA Sheriff's Department. It's been alleged. Go ahead, Aaron.
Uh, this is true. Um, the former um, sheriff of LA County, I think Lee Baca, I think he was um, told to step down because of alleged um, offenses of, of that nature. And we all know that the LAPD is, is definitely the biggest gang out here because, you know, the whole Rampart scandal and a lot of them ha, have that, that, that skull, the dead man's hand tattoo. If you know, if you play cards.
Yes, it's called a, uh, it's called a black hand, they call it.
Well, the black hand.
Go ahead. That's Mexican mafia.
Yeah, yeah, that's the, yeah, the black hand's another name for the Mexican mafia, which by the way, they, they took that symbol from the Italian. So.
Yeah, that's true. All right, Aaron, um, what do you think? You're out there in Los Angeles, man. What do you think's gonna happen? Do you think that um, what's going on, Adina Coz? Do you think that um, that he's gonna end up stepping down or that it's gonna actually go to a recall? And if it does go to a recall, because you said that uh, Kevin DeLonge has strong cultural ties in Los Angeles, do you think if it does go to a recall that he will survive the recall? Or do you think that he won't survive it because people will come out in droves and vote him out? What do you think?
Well, you know what? It's too early to tell, but I do believe in miracles and something may happen where he just may step down. I mean, you saw that interviewer, that interviewer was, was, was firing on him. I mean, he, he, he was hitting him. He couldn't, he couldn't even back and dodge that interview.
Yeah, I think, I gotta give it to the, to the, the interviewer was being, it, it was like he was politely carving him up. The way he was at, you know, he didn't get all emotional. He was just like, well, it seems like you guys got a little clique over here. And he was telling the truth, you know? I'm just saying, you know, you know, if it was me talking to him, I would be jumped all over him like an ollie cat, you know?
But you know what though? You know what, Information Man? I don't have no problem with Latinos putting their culture first. Hey, that's what you're supposed to do. But what, what, what racism and hatred, that, that's something totally different. See, racial, right, and hatred are two totally different things. That's what they realize.
Well, let me just say this. I said it throughout the show tonight, that I really, what I, what I, what I blame them for is, is I don't like the racism and I don't like freezing out black businesses and black uh, property developers. Cause I think that did happen, which is why they don't want that guy in office. But what they're doing is actually, without the racism and without the shenanigans, what they're doing is what black people need to be doing. We need to come together and have voting blocks, come together and have, have a system in which we support one another. We, 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 we watch out for one another. There's something to be learned by the foolishness that they were engaging in. Because the one thing that can be learned is that they were steadfast in supporting one another. This is one of the things that should be learned. And listen to me out clearly, black men. In the first audio that I played tonight, and then I played in the first video about this issue, Nori Martinez is the president of the council, or she used to be before she stepped down. Gil, I think it's Gil uh, Chidil, and this Kevin DeLonge, they were talking to her.
Gil Cepeda.
And what, thank you. And what we can learn from that is that they were saying the whole time while talking to her, don't worry, we got your back. This is what I'm saying, uh, uh, Aaron. We look really stupid sitting up here arguing with black women as black men, going back and forth with this battle of the sexes thing and talking about, oh, look at what black women got. They got a program for black girls to be able to do A, B, and C. Well, what is, where's the black male stuff? Well, if you're concerned about the black man stuff, how about you as black men, get your ass off your ass and go out there and start working with the youth? If you're so concerned about what's happening to black young men and you're crying and whining about, well, black women are getting these programs and they're getting it, well, they're, they're a protective group. That ain't gonna never change, gentlemen. So if you're not happy with the fact that black girls or black women are getting these certain advantages that you feel you're not getting, how about you go out and create those things for yourself? Because one of the things I noticed is that the Latinos, you don't hear their men telling their women, you stay to the back. They're sitting up there, they're sitting up there in a meeting with her talking about, don't worry, relax, 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 we've got your back. Do you, they're not sitting up there worrying about, well, she's a woman in a position, 'cause they're thinking about, well, this woman is of our culture. She's in a position and as high as she rises, we gonna rise with her. Because why? She gonna have our back, we gonna have her back, and we gonna rise together. While we as black folks, in general, not all of us, but some of us, are arguing with our women, fighting with our, creating this gender war. While the Latinos are running, are running around here talking about, we looking for power, baby. We're looking for how we can governize our community politically around our issues and fight for our issues. Let black people argue with each other while we take up all the, the opportunities. That's what you can be learned from this. Is that they, is that they were, they were willing as men to back their woman because they knew that they were gonna get something out of it. Why don't we learn the lesson in that? There's a lesson for us to learn as black people.
I agree.
Aaron, I give you the last words tonight. I toss, I said a mouthful there. And get that, uh, okay, great. Somebody deleted that. I don't know why YouTube allows these, these uh, sexual bots to come into your chat room, but they got them out of there. I got, you got the last word, brother.
I'm glad you said that, um, Infomant, because um, I, I doubt very seriously that there's a Latino manosphere. But yeah, you got plenty of these Negroes.
Never heard of it.
Doing the manosphere thing. And I'm also glad that you made, decided to do the thing that's happening, 'cause this happened in my hometown, Chicago. And I'm from the Inglewood neighborhood. I'm, I'm glad you're gonna talk about that. But, but, but anyway, back to this topic.
Well, 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 Aaron, when I do that show, I might need to have you on the panel to talk to me about it, 'cause you know the neighborhoods better than I do. But I got an article. And it's breaking down how black people are shrinking in Chicago, going all the way back to 2000. By, and it's going by neighborhood by neighborhood and it's breaking down why it's shrinking, what's happening? All kind of crazy stuff going on in Chicago. There's the, I even got an article where you're talking about how they're doing, they're stealing people's checks out of the mail. They're making, they're making fake checks by getting their hands on the master key from the uh, from the post office, the poster, the postal worker. And they're going into the uh, the uh, mailboxes by using their mail keys. And then they're creating fake checks from checks that people really get. Man, man, they got, we got a lot of stuff going on. Lot of stuff going on.
The thing that pisses me off, the thing that pisses me off about us as a people, is like you just said, 100% Infomant. We're so busy engaged in these, these gender wars and hair and weu conversations and hair headed, who again? And all that other stuff. And while the other times, while at the same time, the Latinos, the Asians, they're vying for power. I mean, think about it. Most of South Central LA is now mostly Latino. And our South Central, and Watts has historically been black. And so is Compton. Matter of fact, there was um, there were even racist attacks in Compton from blacks and Mexicans.
You're right.
They, they, they even made an acronym out of the word Compton, saying, city of Mexicans pulling triggers on N-words.
Right. Yeah. So we don't really have time. I'm just writing some people in the chat room. Aaron, I heard everything you said. We don't really have time, brother, for the BS. All I'm gonna say again, one of the things I learned from this whole crazy message in uh, LA is that those, all three of those Spanish-speaking men, those Mexican Latino men, they all were backing each other's play, including that woman who was president of the council, because they all working together. Instead of us fighting and having these goofy conversations about the battle of the sexes with our women, how about we recognize that if we work together, men and, black men and black women, we could actually help each other and get somewhere. They're, they are looking for power. The question I'm gonna, this is the last thing I wanna drop on everybody tonight. One, do black people want power or do we just want symbolism? I'll leave you with that tonight. Think about that. Aaron, thank you for coming up with me up tonight. And everybody in the chat room, thank you for spending a little time with the show tonight. DJ Chuck, thank you as always. Earl Owens, Jill's Chocolate, thank you. Uh, I guess sometime in the next couple of days, I'll be going live on the Information Man Speaks Podcast and, and talk to you all about something on that channel. And be on the lookout for my audio podcast, radio style podcast too. I'll probably be dropping something on there tomorrow. I'll probably be going live on that tomorrow on the audio only podcast. Uh, take care, Aaron. Thank you. Thank you, dear brother. Peace. All right, everybody, that's it. I didn't wanna go this long tonight, but I just wanted to give the brother some respect because I know he wanted to really talk about this issue and he lives in Los Angeles. So thank you, everybody. You guys have a great week. Tell somebody that you love them. Kiss somebody that you love. Um, get some good sleep tonight. Get some good loving tonight too, if that's what you're gonna do. Just have a great week. I'll be live again on Sunday. I might drop another sneak show because there's something that I need to talk to black women about, is related to health. That's very important, that concerns me, that you all need to know. And I'm gonna do, I might do another video, maybe Wednesday night. Maybe I'll wait till Friday and just do a little pop-up video like I did tonight. Because I think y'all need to hear this. It's very important. It does concern you very seriously. So with that said, I'm gonna leave tonight. Y'all take care. And um, you'll see me on Sunday. I may drop another video that I'm talking about earlier. You'll see me on the Information Man Speaks Podcast. Hopefully I'll be able to do something on that channel this week. You all have a great rest of your evening. Sleep well. Tell someone that you love them again. And uh, as always, you all are, everyone in that chat room, everyone listening in the clouds, you are the best. Thank you, everybody. Peace.
Tell the truth.
Peace, everybody. Thank you again. Make sure you get, make sure you get brother Yaupu's book, Our Yaupu Yaupu Melanin, a novel, fictional, sci-fi, black novel about melanin and how we will survive because of our melanin in the future. Get it. Get it. I appreciate all of you. And good night.
It's the info. It's the man with the info. Whatever you wanna know, come join the man with the info show. It's the info. It's the man with the info. Whatever you wanna know, come join the man with the info show. It's the info. It's the info.